And it's probably my third amateur radio license I've held. My original license, W60T, actually is attached to the Oakland Radio Club. But that's a long story. But what Mr. Parker just conveyed to you, it's very, very important. Even though Officer Elizabeth Lamb, along with several other agencies from the Office of Emergency Services to the San Mateo County, just drafted a communications plan. Well, a communications plan just about goes as far as the personnel who operates it and exercises it and drill on it, and we have not done that. Mr. Parker, in regards, he's been very, very instrumental in maintaining a liaison between the city, the county, and the community. I think he's done a very, very good job. Myself, I can pretty much back up what Mr. Parker is telling you, even though I don't, I am not directly attached to the actual infrastructure. But just this evening, with the backup on US on University Circle, there was an Engine Two dispatch across the highway, and they had trouble. They had immense problems getting across, just from their station, getting across Highway 101. And this was about 6 o'clock, about 5:30 to 6 o'clock PM. And you can see for yourself, the traffic backs up in both directions, in the morning and in the evening. And Engine Truck Two on the University Avenue, they're going to have problems if we have a disaster. Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any other speakers on this item? No? Okay. Councilmember Moody, were there specific questions that you have for staff?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor. So, to the staff, I know we have an advisory committee, and one of the issues that is very clear Mr. Parker raises is the makeup of that committee and how many local community members are participating on that committee. Are they representative of some of the local block clubs or associations? And do we have a clear understanding of the linkage between our neighborhoods and how we're going to communicate when disaster comes?
Are you talking about the JPA Board?
I think what's in front of us here is an agreement that we have with the JPA, and it goes through the changes. So, I don't know that your question really...
Right. So, this is, I think we're talking about two or three different things. The JPA, what's before you today is the JPA Agreement. It was originally drafted in 1997, as I recall. I'm not looking at it right now. It's a JPA Board, so by definition, each JPA member has a board member on that committee. Mayor Martinez is our representative for East Palo Alto.
Certainly.
So, it's, I'm not sure if that's what the question is.
Okay. So, for me, the question is, getting back to Mr. Parker's point, is there a level of certainty that the community is going to have some level of involvement with our strategy around disaster preparedness?
The community will have a level of involvement with the rolling out or the operational piece of things. This is not the operation. This is establishing the relationship amongst the entities. So, it's a different, while it has, while it's somewhat related to emergency preparedness and disaster preparedness, this is a different topic or a different animal, if you will.
So, help me, just in terms of articulating to Mr. Parker's point about disaster preparedness, community involvement, community engagement, if you would.
So, the community does not have a seat at the table of the JPA.
Aside from the JPA?
Yeah, that's something that's done at the community level, absolutely. Yeah. So, we don't have an advisory board, per se, on disaster preparedness. That's a community advisory board. But we would look to the community for assistance. Mr. Parker and I have met on several occasions about this. I know he's got, he's a ham radio operator. We've looked into whether this facility itself has an antenna or not, and I believe it doesn't. We're still trying to confirm that. Joseph has been helping with that. So, we will, and Mr. Parker is correct, in a large, large disaster, very likely, the community has to be prepared to take care of themselves for up to five days. In our last newsletter, in fact, spelled out lots of tips on how one can be prepared and what one must do, whether in East Palo Alto or anywhere else. Very likely, the authorities, if you will, local government, will not get to the community for probably five days.
Okay. If I could, to the mayor, since you sit on that committee, are there quarterly or monthly meetings which allow for community members to come and to address the body?
Yeah, there are quarterly meetings. They're public meetings.
Okay. I think it would be helpful if we posted that information, gave Mr. Parker and others an opportunity to participate?
Yeah, there's a website on the county, on the county website, which shows the meetings, the agendas, meeting times, all of that. If he wants to send me an email, I can forward that information to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, through the mayor, and also in the agreement, under Article Five of mutual responsibilities, it talks about the emergency preparedness and planning standards. The county and city shall each accept primary responsibility for readiness within their respective jurisdictions. So, it's, you know, within that, it's stating, I agree with you, we need to make sure that we're taken care of, and we look out for our residents and for East Palo Alto. Also, under Section 5.03, local coordinator responsibilities, it does list the search program. So, we just, we, I understand the concern is to make sure that, in the case of an emergency, the city of East Palo Alto and the residents are taken care of. I do agree with you, that is important, and I'm sure staff does as well, and I believe we need to work on that to make sure that we're taken care of, because in the case of emergency, we will have to rely on each other. So, thank you.
Goodness, Mayor, I would just also like to add that, you know, if our city faces an emergency, that we have to be proactive and we have to be prepared to know that the first responders won't get here first. It is our ears and eyes in this community, and I know that a lot of residents have participated in the different workshops and even certified to, you know, help participate. So, if we should face that, we need to be the ones who, you know, address the needs of this community. So, I do understand your concerns, and we'll be ready, hopefully, and as much prepared. And I think it is important that the community be educated and kept abreast of what's going on at all times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any other councilmembers have questions about this item? Are we ready to move forward? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we accept item, was it 3F?
3F, yeah. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Moody.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rutherford. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes with four yes votes. Moving on to special presentations, we have one presentation this evening. Hip Housing, affordable housing update in San Mateo County. We have Kate Comfort Har here tonight.
It's a little bit of a tongue twister, isn't it? Har here. So, once again, I am Kate Comfort Har. I'm Executive Director of Hip Housing. Mayor Martinez, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to talk a little bit about our programs, but I'm also going to talk about what's happening with affordable housing and the crisis that the county faces, and then also what our programs do to try and assist and work in the affordable housing arena. So, the first thing I want to do, though, is I want to, I think each of you got one of our calendars. This is an annual calendar that we do every year. It's our 13th year, actually, where we ask local schoolchildren to draw pictures and tell us what home means to them. We think it's a wonderful showcase for the work that we do, because it allows us to hear from the voice of a child what the importance of housing is. So, this is a really fun project for us. We get as many as 500 different applicants. It's always really hard to pick our 12 favorites, so we always pick 13, so we're reinventing the calendar. It's now a 13-month calendar. But it's pretty fun. We have our very first TP this year. So, let's talk a little bit about what's going on in the county. We are really facing an unprecedented crisis in affordable housing. San Mateo County remains one of the most expensive places in the country to live. By some accounts, it's actually the most expensive place to live. One in five families can't currently afford their housing situation, and 2,100 people sleep homeless each night. That's up 12% since 2011. We also get more housing referral calls to 211 than any other kind of agency. So, we, 36% of all calls to 211 are for housing-related services. The next closest thing is for food, and that's 10% of those calls. So, by 26% more calls. The Section 8 waitlist for the county is closed, and the waitlists for shelters are long and complicated to get into. We have clients coming to us on a daily basis that have no place where they can go. There's an increased demand for rental units, and it's fueled by the foreclosure crisis that have forced people out of their homes while also forcing renters out of homes that were owned by owners that have been foreclosed on. And we also have declining homeownership rate, rent rates. As a result, an average one-bedroom apartment by the county indicators is nearly $2,100 for a one-bedroom apartment. That's an 8.9% increase since last quarter. The San Mateo occupancy rate is 97%. That means that even if you could afford an apartment here, you likely can't find one. And we're seeing a real exodus of families who are making lower or moderate incomes in exchange for an increase in households making more than $200,000. So, what we're seeing is a larger gap between the haves and the have-nots, so to speak, leaving a real need for much more affordable housing. Realignment, investors purchasing rental units, and then jacket prices way up, and aging population, and a fairly slow recovery for the lowest-income earners have all really put a lot of stress on the rental market. And there is a misconception about job growth. There will be a lot of job growth in this county, and the county's predicting that, but it's not necessarily going to be in the high-tech, high-paying positions. It's going to be in positions paying $50,000 or less. We're talking about service positions. We're talking about teachers, bank tellers, EMTs, retail sales, things related to tourism and service. So, in order to afford even a $1,900 apartment, and remember, we're up to 2,100 now, you need to make, on average, $82,000 a year. Your average schoolteacher makes far less than that, EMTs, bank tellers. That means that they can't afford a current apartment in this county. In terms of how we get affordable housing created, there's been some really hard punches that affordable housing developers have taken. So, the demise of the redevelopment agencies was huge. Most people think that they funded, you know, the downtowns and stadiums, but they were the largest funder of affordable housing and affordable housing programs. We've lost over $1 billion statewide in funding from the loss of the redevelopment agencies. We continue to experience reductions and cuts to CDBG from HUD, sequestration just this year, another 8.2% loss in this county. So, it continues to be really a difficult funding environment to create new affordable housing. In addition, in 2008, there was the Palmer Decision, which made inclusionary housing very, very difficult for any municipality to do, and most municipalities are just saying, "Forget it until we get it resolved." And what that means is that cities and the counties and agencies can't require developers to put affordable housing into new developments. So, that creates a lot of restrictions around what kind of policies we can have to create affordable housing. And then the biggest blow came just recently, or I guess not the biggest, but yet another blow. As of 2014, the Silicon Valley Community Foundation will no longer fund any safety net services. So, that's all housing and food-related agencies. That's about 32 agencies throughout San Mateo and Santa Clara County that will no longer receive funding to help with safety net services. So, what does that mean? That means a lot of people can't live here who work here. We have about 184,000 people in this county who commute in to work. And if you're at the lowest-earning income levels, if you're down around minimum wage or just above minimum wage, that means you're likely spending about 70% of your income on transportation and housing. So, in addition to that, creating really strenuous quality-of-life issues for those workers in our county. Additionally, you know, there's environmental issues in terms of traffic and smog and air quality. And, you know, those kind of housing shortages that we have that can't accommodate the workforce is going to eventually lead to workforce shortages as well. So, the services that we have in this county that make it a great place to live are going to become difficult to employ. And of course, who's hardest hit? Those of low income, seniors, and those with disabilities. So, we know that it's hard to create new affordable housing. We know there's a lot of restrictions. So, what do we do? That means what we have to do is use what we have much more efficiently. And that's where Hip Housing comes in. Hip Housing has been providing creative affordable housing solutions since 1972, so over 40 years. We have three programs. We have a home sharing program, a self-sufficiency program, and a property development program. All three of these programs use existing housing stock to create new affordable housing. Since 1972, we've served over 66,000 people. We've placed over nearly 20,000 people in housing. Each year, we either house or maintain housing for 1,400 people. About 700 of those are in our home sharing program, another 450 in our properties, which we own, and 250 in our self-sufficiency program. Additionally, we field about 3,000 phone calls a year for housing-related services, and so we're one of the number-one referral agencies in the county for helping people find housing solutions. So, what is home sharing? Home sharing is partnering those who have space in their home with those who need a place to live. For the home provider, it reduces their housing costs and provides them with the ability to stay independent in their homes. For the seekers, it provides an affordable place to live. We make it really safe. It's not like a Craigslist. Anybody coming through our services are going to be thoroughly interviewed. We do criminal background checks. We do income verification. We create living-together agreements, and the long-term case management that's needed to make these relationships really stable and productive. We can also do service exchange for rent. We have one of the largest home sharing programs in the country. It serves about 1,900 people each year. The average rent for someone in a home sharing environment is around $700. So, compared to 2,100, that's a really affordable option. We provide long-term professional case management, meaning that for as long as somebody's in a home sharing arrangement, we have professionally-trained case managers that will work with them to resolve conflicts, to create an environment where everybody feels safe. For our seniors, we do quarterly check-ins to make sure that they're in a relationship and in a home sharing arrangement that's really working well for them. The program is supported by private foundations and donors. We also get money from the county, and 18 of the 21 municipalities in the county do support the program. We think it's a really integral part of any housing program, because somebody in Belmont could be matched with someone in San Mateo, someone in East Palo Alto could be matched with someone in Menlo Park. There's so much overlap in the program and so much benefit to all the cities, that we'd like to see all cities involved in the program to show the support for it. This is sort of, it's just an overview. The majority of our home providers are seniors, right? They're house-rich and maybe cash-poor. A lot of them don't want to live alone. They don't have family close, because they can't afford to live here. But at the same time, they don't really want to live alone, but they don't want to go on Craigslist either. So, by going through us, it creates a safe environment for them to find someone to live in their home that can possibly help with some of the chores and the cost of maintaining that home while also providing companionship. So, it creates a really good win-win situation. A typical home, housemate often will work two jobs. We see that quite a bit. It'll be, you know, a teacher, and maybe they're a home health aide at night, or they are a housekeeper during the day, and they do, you know, they're a stylist. They have a variety of different positions. But typically, we, our goal is to make sure that nobody in the household is spending more than 30% of their income on rent. This is a great program for foreclosure prevention. It also prevents homelessness. It encourages financial independence. But most importantly, it maximizes existing housing stock. It's much faster and much more efficient than trying to build new, and it's something that we can do right away. If you can't, if you don't have a place and you need someplace to go, you can always call Hip Housing. Our program is never closed. We can't always match everyone, because we do rely on good compatibility between the housemates in order to make the match, but no one is turned away. There are 60 international home sharing programs in eight countries. There's about 70 programs throughout the US. There are 12 in California. We are the only home sharing program in the area. There used to be a small one run through Catholic charities down in Santa Clara County. It's no longer available. It was, it closed last year. There's a small program in San Francisco, but it's not similar to ours. They don't do a lot of the background checking and the kind of case management that we do. The really exciting thing for us is that pretty much every one of these agencies that exist worldwide have contacted us in setting up their programs. We have a database that we have created that's kind of like a match.com database. We fill in all the data, and we create reports, and then we turn those reports over to the individuals who are interested in home sharing, let them make the match, bring them back in, so that we can sit down and create a very detailed home sharing agreement, so everybody understands the parameters under which the household runs. We've received some pretty notable recognition for the program. We've been highlighted on CBS News with Katie Couric. Oprah actually interviewed several of our clients, and we've also received a lot of support from Congresswoman Jackie Speer, whose mother and father were actually home providers at one time. So, our other program, or one of our other programs, is our self-sufficiency program, which is recognized as one of the top seven welfare-to-work programs in the state. It's for families who have minor children, who are committed to completing work goals to break their cycle of poverty. So, it's for parents in school. It really promotes financial independence and breaks the cycle of poverty, especially for children. When they see their parents in school and working hard, it's going to be a great role model for them. What the program does is provide housing scholarships, long-term case management, life skills workshops, and housing placement opportunities for the participants in the program. We own three properties that house nine families, and those properties, the participants pay $50 a month, we subsidize the rest of their rent. The $50 is a way for them to feel committed to the house. But in exchange, they have to create budgets. They have to be enrolled in school. They have to meet with their case managers on a regular basis. They have to have a whole work plan. We help them with savings accounts and to learn about the life skills that they'll need to really break their cycle of poverty. It's one of our favorite programs, because there is such great outcomes from it. 100% of our graduates report better housing situations as they come out of the program. There is an average increase in income of about 81% for graduates, increase in savings from 1,300 to $1,321. Mind you, we pretty mu, actually, it's not pretty much, it's absolute. Every person coming into this program is either homeless or at risk of homelessness. A lot of our clients come as referrals from shelters, but, so they're coming with nothing. So, to create $1,300 in savings while also completing degrees and maintaining jobs while raising families, it's a pretty tremendous outcome. Our final program is our property development. We own 14 properties throughout the county. The most recent one you may actually have seen, it's on East Willow Road. It was a vacant 12-unit apartment that was not well-maintained, and only one of the 12 units were rented. We purchased it in collaboration with the city of Menlo Park, the city of Redwood City, the county, and a private loan, and completely rehabbed the unit. It is now solar-powered. It has free Wi-Fi for tenants. It has a new community room that it didn't have before, and it is fully occupied for veteran households, and everyone in that unit is extremely low-income. The work that we do in East Palo Alto, we actually do quite a bit of outreach here, and in fact, I think we're actually meeting with the Rotary this week. One of our new employees is meeting there. Last year, we took 65 intake calls from people who live in the city of East Palo Alto. We interviewed 67 people. We have four home sharing arrangements here and four participants in our self-sufficiency program. This year, so far, our fiscal year runs July 1 to June, so we're in the middle of our fiscal year, and so far, we've seen about an 11% increase in those applying for home sharing and those matched. We have now 11 clients matched in home sharing this year. So, I'm here tonight. I really appreciate your time in listening to this and getting a feel for the programs that we offer. If you take nothing else away from this program, I would hope that you would know that our home sharing program is one of the strongest programs that we have, one of the strongest in the country. We're very fortunate to have it here in this county. But right now, we have a six-to-one ratio, the largest ratio we've ever had for home providers to seekers. That means for every one provider, we have six seekers. So, if you know a senior or you know a family that could benefit from having someone in their home to share a room and the responsibilities, please give them our information. We would love to talk with them. I've left some information over on the table. Here's some flyers and some cards. So, if anybody has any questions or would like to follow up, we welcome you to please call, and I'd be happy to take any questions that you have now.
Thank you so much. Your mic's on. Thank you so much. Councilmembers, questions, comments?
I would just like to say, I've heard of Hip Housing, and I know that you've done a tremendous job in placing, like you said, very low-income and homeless people in your housing. And I think, I was just talking to someone today about trying to find a place with a senior couple or a widowed, you know, older person, and sort of like, you know, do the chores and, you know, pay a small portion. And I think that, you know, we can't have too many of these programs like this, because we have so many people that deserve to be in, you know, safe housing.
That's our goal, is to create safe, decent place for people to live that they can afford to live in. It is so hard. There are just really no market incentives to create for affordable housing. So, home sharing is probably the most efficient way. Every nonprofit and municipality in the county refers to us, because there really just aren't other options right now.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Want to make a comment?
What was that?
I want to make a comment before she takes off.
Oh, yeah, sure.
A question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, you know, I concur. Hip Housing has been doing a tremendous work in San Mateo County for a number of years. With the spike of homelessness that's occurring, what are some of the strategies that you recommend to help do a better job of getting the word out, doing the networking, before families or individuals reach that threshold of homelessness? You talked about 11% increase just in this community alone, and I think we will all agree that there are many, many homes that are held by one senior member and who, if they had the opportunity to learn more, to know more, what are some of the practices other cities are using?
So, what we try to do is as much outreach as possible. We do a monthly letter that goes out to all, it's a huge distribution. I think we just distribute to about 5,000 different entities throughout the county. So, it's churches, it's municipalities, it's senior centers, it's a whole variety of folks that we've spent 40 years collecting this list that we do distribution to. But right now, you know, there just isn't a lot out there, and so what we try to do is maximize what we've got to, because, you know, funding is tight everywhere. So, we're trying to do a lot more electronic and online outreach. We've also just hired our first community manager, and what that means, we've kind of married the position between an outreach position for the programs while also being a social media manager, to help us message, to make sure that people don't see themselves as, "Well, I don't need social services, I just need a roommate." And that's one of the things that we've admired, and, well, we have this language, home providers, home seekers. Well, really, what we're talking about are roommates, right? So, most people don't want to see themselves in a social service environment. "I'm working hard, I have a full-time job, I'm not, you know, I don't want to be in social service." So, we're looking at strategies to engage people so that they can hear us in new ways. So, it's social media outreach, it's more community outreach. We're working a lot with, actually, with escrow companies now, too, trying to get people before they go into foreclosure. Once somebody's already in the foreclosure process, it's often too late. You can't. So, you got to get them before. So, we work with a lot of banks right now, too, to try and make sure that we can, if they've got someone that they know that is headed into crisis, that we can intervene before they get there. But, you know, our counselors, most of our staff have been with us for over 10 years, so they really know the resources in the county. So, when someone does come to us, we take a lot of time to help them find the resources within the county that they need to keep them stable.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Great. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you again for being here tonight. The one thing that really sticks out in my mind is the reduction or elimination of safety net services. What does that do for your organization?
Well, it was a $50,000 loss for us. For Second Harvest Food Bank, it was a $200,000 loss. For Shelter Network, it was $125,000. So, the foundation is narrowing their, they're giving priorities. They really are focused on things that they think are going to prevent homelessness in the long run and prevent people needing safety net services. So, as they've explained it to us, they want to devote their resources to things like immigration reform and California state standards in schools, and making sure that children coming out of schools can succeed. I personally think it's very short-sighted. I've tried to talk with them and work with them on this. They are the largest community foundation in the world. There's no reason they can't fund safety net services. So, I think the more people know about it, people just don't know. They don't know that they did this, because they're constantly, you know, talking about what they do give to, so they do seem like they're doing all the right things. But I've made it kind of a personal mission to make sure that I include this in every presentation, because it needs to be known that we need a community foundation that supports safety net services. And cultures and art, which is another thing they cut out about five years ago.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks again.
Yep, you bet.
All right. So, moving on to the oral reports. We don't have any report out of closed session. We didn't have closed session. Do we have any staff reports this evening? Do we have any staff reports this evening?
No, thank you.
Okay. City council reports. Do any councilmembers have anything to let you report out on?
No reports, but I do have a few announcements. First, I'd like to say Happy New Year to everyone. I want to make an announcement that on this Friday, Beverly Beasley Johnson will be retiring from the county after thirty-seven years of being in her career field. She's been in the county for seven years. So congratulations to her for her retirement and for all the great work that she's done. Excuse me. In addition, on Friday, January seventeenth, Free at Last, the Community Recovery and Rehabilitation Services will be celebrating their twentieth-year anniversary, and that's at Free at Last on Bay Road. Services start sort of all day, begins at 1:00 p.m. and actually goes to 8:30. Also, there's a save the date for groundbreaking for the Ravenswood Family Health Center. That's going to take place January twenty-second at 2:00 p.m.
Great, thanks. I guess I'll go next. Our vice mayor and I met with our city manager and our facilitator for our city council retreat, which is going to be on Friday, January twenty-fourth, here at City Hall in the community room. And it will go from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We've asked the facilitator and our city manager to focus on capacities and core services, so I welcome the community to join us in this conversation. Again, our city council retreat is Friday, January twenty-fourth, from 9:00 to 3:00 o'clock here. That's it for me. Do we have any other city council reports?
I have a few. Ms. Rutherford? Oh, I'll go. So first of all, I just want to welcome everybody back from the holiday and hope that everyone had a wonderful holiday and things went well, and you were safe, and you enjoyed your family. You know, kudos out to a couple of groups. The East Palo Alto Police Association, Equity Residential, Project We Hope, the Staff of the Woodland Parks Apartments, and there's probably a few other groups that I'm missing. But these organizations made sure that many of the children and families in East Palo Alto had an opportunity to have a gift on Christmas. And I just want to say thank you to those organizations and others who just made that possible for many of the families here in East Palo Alto. On January twenty-seventh, I will be co-hosting a luncheon with Reverend Floyd Purdy for the East Palo Alto Ministers Alliance. It's going to take place at Faith Missionary Baptist Church. We welcome all leaders of the faith community, and they're encouraged to attend. Be at twelve, from 12 noon to 1:30. There is an organization called Next Door. It's kind of a social media group that is kind of designed to help us become better neighbors one unto another, where we're able to share information about public safety issues, events, items for sale, and celebrations and things of that nature. This past Saturday, a leadership group comprised of folks from East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, and Palo Alto got together for about two hours to begin talking about ways in which we can become better neighbors. And one of the consensus that came out of the group was their willingness to continue to meet. This upcoming Saturday, myself, councilmember from Palo Alto, Mark Berman, and Menlo Park Mayor Ray Mueller are going to meet with this leadership group again to kind of further the conversation about best practices and how we can become better neighbors and really kind of learn a little bit more about one another's community. So look forward to coming back to the council with some action items for recommendations in the future. I want to also, she's in the audience right now, but I want to say kudos to a former East Palo Alto employee, Mary Flamer. And she probably would present later on, but I just want to thank you for your leadership around the Martin Luther King Day celebrations for a number of years here in East Palo Alto. On January twentieth, once again, you're going to provide leadership at the community church to make sure that we as a community are keeping our dreams alive around the Dr. Martin Luther King celebrations. I wanted to acknowledge you and your work. And then finally, on another note, I've been notified that our city attorney will be addressing with the council a 1090 conflict of interest issue, which came about because of my participation in a vote for a majesty grant recipient. I wish to assure the council, I take this matter very seriously, and will assist and bring this matter to a favorable conclusion for all. Okay? And that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll probably have that item on our next meeting agenda, all of our city manager agendas.
We'll take care of it, thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any—sorry, did you have any reports?
No, I didn't have any reports. I do—I will be attending the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Board meeting tomorrow. We do have elections, and I am up for president position. So that happens tomorrow. We'll see what happens.
Okay.
One other thing I forgot, I just wanted to—I forgot to mention that the Kiwanis and EHP provides hot meals to the community. So if you want to come out on a Wednesday between 5:00 and 6:00 at St. Francis on Bay Road, there are hot meals provided to entire community or all those that come out for a hot meal. Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to—
I'm sorry. You know, I just want to say, in his absence, I just wanted to say kudos to councilmember Ruben Abrikia and for his efforts with the William Webster Celebration that took place at St. Francis of Assisi's Church. It was very well-attended. Myself and councilmember Rutherford were in the audience. Well over a hundred and fifty, possibly two hundred people came out, not only to learn about our connection between East Palo Alto and Paris, but I think more importantly, to celebrate and support William Webster and the work that he does for our community. So in the absence of Mayor—I mean, Ruben Abrikia, former mayor, I just bring those comments to the council.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry, there is something that I wanted to ask our chief to mention today in terms of a very important anniversary today.
Thank you. I did—you know, I'm—as councilman Moody pointed out, I'm very proud of the—what the association did over the Christmas holidays and what they do every day. But I also wanted to make sure we did not forget that eight years ago, in almost four hours, Officer Richard May died in the line of duty, and so today is the anniversary. And I'd like to remind the community of that.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready for community forum. Do we have speakers?
Yes, we have two speakers for the community forum. First up, we have Arturo Arias.
Okay, so we'll have our first speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Arturo Arias. I live at nineteen forty-eight Clark Avenue, right behind Home Tipo. I've been a resident for over thirty years of East Palo Alto. I'm being—having a problem there in our street with the parking issue with trucks, motorhomes that are coming around our street and they're parking there overnight or on some occasions, they're staying there for long periods of times. I have been asking for help in different departments within the city, and everybody has mentioned to me that it's been very difficult to enforce any kind of code enforcement. And they suggested that I come to the meeting and ask for assistance from the council to see if we could push an ordinance or something in that line. I really needed help. This is building up like a snowball, and it's growing. And I have seen many people that are sleeping there in those trucks, and I'm very concerned about the situation. I don't know whether they have the same problem in other parts of the city, but since I have that problem there, I'm bringing it forward. I'm here to request assistance, help, in any way that it can be provided to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Flamer.
Good evening, my name is Mary Flamer. I live at eighteen twenty Stevens Avenue here in the city of East Palo Alto. I'd first like to say Happy New Year and congratulations, Mayor Martinez and Vice Mayor Gauthier. And welcome back to Mrs. Rutherford, we're glad to see you back on the council. I'm here to talk about the Martin Luther King Birthday Celebration. Thank you, Councilwoman Moody, for acknowledging that. This is a ministry for me. Every year about this time, the community church of East Palo Alto takes the time to celebrate and commemorate the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The national holiday is the same day that community church will commemorate the life and legacy of Dr. King. We invite you—and I'll leave a copy of the letters—Honorable Mayor Martinez to be a part of this celebration by bringing greetings from the city of East Palo Alto. This invitation includes each member of the city council and staff. In addition to celebrating the life and legacy of Dr. King, we will also take the opportunity to honor former President Nelson Mandela of South Africa. The passing of Mr. Mandela reminds us of the sacrifice that he made to bring justice to his countrymen. The decision to honor Mr. Mandela this time has to do with the parallel lives that he and Dr. King led. Both had hearts of love and compassion for mankind of all ethnic groups around the world under suffering oppression brought on by disenfranchement and poverty. A proclamation honoring Mr. Mandela from the city of East Palo Alto would be greatly appreciated. I personally look forward to seeing you on Monday, January twentieth, 2014, at 11:00 a.m. at the East Palo Alto Community Church. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
That's it for the community forum.
Okay, great.
Mr. Webster's in the building.
I think, are you for community forum, right?
Right. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is William Webster, Zeta Four Eight, East of Keith. I regret that former vice—former Mayor Ruben Abrikia is not here because I want to thank him for the inspiration of requesting that I organize the thirtieth anniversary international celebration of—the incorporation of the city of East Palo Alto. This took place on the evening of Sunday, December twenty-ninth. There was a focus upon the Paris World premiere of my chamber opera forty years ago, The Little Match Girl. And I want to thank—I want to thank our new city council member, Donna Rutherford, and city council member Moody for your attendance at the event. The inspiration for the event ultimately goes back to the late Aretha Lawrence, one of the great community leaders of East Palo Alto. And I was grateful to have the opportunity to memorialize her by dedicating the Paris World premiere of what for me is the fulfillment of my life in Paris. But I want—in the last few seconds, I want to say, last night Nancy Shepherd was elected mayor of Palo Alto. She has been a wonderful friend of this city. You have a great opportunity, you only have it for twelve months, to work with Nancy Shepherd to resolve some of the issues, such as the parking issues. After the city manager went through and related that Palo Alto is the number-one livable city in the United States, then he read through the list of the problems. Heading the list were two items relating to East Palo Alto. Nancy Shepherd is not one in a million, she's one in a billion. And there's a tremendous opportunity if you take advantage of the fact that she knows the community, and she will work with her tremendous effectiveness and imagination to help resolve some of these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We have one more on community forum, and two that want to talk on Agenda Item Eight A. Should we do a community forum first?
Perfect, yeah.
Mrs. Parker?
Thank you. My name is Dora Parker, and Happy New Year to the city council. This question or comment is to the city council and Chief Roach. And I'm speaking on behalf of a friend, co-exercise friend, that said on New Year's Eve, New Year's Day night, he called. He—there was a big party going on on his street, and they were partying to 3:00 in the morning. And he called the police department, and the policeman told him to email, email it. He didn't come to see what was going on, there was carousing going on, and he just—the man was so hurt.
Excuse me, can you—can you address the council, please? Can you address the council, please?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Can you—can you address the council, please? Thank you.
All right. The man was so hurt the next day until—he's a very quiet man, and, you know, he doesn't like a lot of camaraderie, but he wanted something done about it. And they turned him off very abruptly, and so he was just appalled. So I want to know, because I feel really hurt about it, because if I had called, I wonder what kind of results I would have gotten. I mean, I want to feel like I can live in a city and depend on the police department if something is going wrong, to come and see—I mean, it's their job to come and see about it, not tell me to get on the computer and do an email. This is something serious. I mean, the police department is supposed to take care of the community. So I just want to bring that to Chief Roach's attention.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other speakers for community forum?
Not for community forum.
No, okay. So moving on to policy and action items, we have Item Eight A, potential inclusionary housing ordinance amendments to Chapter eight point five of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, the HIP Housing—we planned this well with HIP Housing coming and to set the table, I guess, as it relates to the housing issues and concerns. As indicated in their presentation, the inclusionary housing issues have been put in a difficult position with court cases. You received last year, now in November, a presentation by the consultant that was prepared to deal with the NEXUS study and NEXUS analysis to look at what were potential impact fees, development-related fees that could be attached to address affordable housing within the city. The next step that was in that process was to evaluate some policy issues and direct staff on some policy issues that would serve to implement those recommendations coming out of that NEXUS study. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brent to walk you through some of those issues, and then we can certainly answer questions as it relates to the issue.
Thank you, John. My name is Brent Butler, obviously, and I'm the planning manager for the city of East Palo Alto. And I have a brief presentation to discuss some of the issues on the horizon. And issue number one, I feel that is fairly irrelevant for the study and it's somewhat addressed, is, as John has indicated, there's been a change to the legal climate. Whereas previously, we were able to use the police power, municipal land use zoning, to require developers to provide housing for the workforce. We have increasingly— We have increasingly found that the courts are saying that the Mitigation Fee Act, which contains a set of provisions, is controlling. And what that means essentially is that the Mitigation Fee Act sets a set of parameters that we have to abide by. One of them is the nexus, that there has to be a reasonable nexus between what is being asked from a property developer and the actual mitigation. And additionally, it has to be roughly proportional, and that is known as from one of the famous Supreme Court cases of Dolan. And then finally, there must be a clear and navigable way for developers to actually determine that they would like, they feel that they are somehow aggrieved by the action of the requirement for fees. And then finally, the aggrieved party should have a pay and protest option, meaning essentially that they can, they can pay the amount that they contest under protest and move forward with the project, and then come back to that issue at a later date, so the project is not delayed. And then, we've noted that some of the emerging issues that are really critical, which were touched upon by the recommendations in the NEXUS study are, first and foremost, number one, as you see, legal issues, that Palmer versus Sixth Street Properties identified that local government may not actually use the police powers to require the production of affordable, or we call it inclusionary housing, rental housing specifically in the rental market. And then, number two, just our next-door neighbor, the development right next to the freeway, 101 Sterling Park, the property owners there filed a lawsuit against the city. And the Supreme Court did find that, for the first time, that they questioned the validity of the for-sale housing. So whereas initially, we recognized that we might have to have the nexus and rough proportionality for rental housing, it started to expand to look at that being a requirement for for-sale housing as well. And then, there are also in the recommendations, some concerns as to adjustments. When I say adjustments, that every few years, we do have, like we recently experienced, is that fairly significant downturn in the economy, and that housing values will decline. The NEXUS study in itself is based upon the disposable income that a household has and the impact of that income in the creation or the demand for new jobs. And so consequently, the maximum supportable fee may change as a result. And so, the recommendation is to ensure that we adjust that. Now finally, I should point out, issue number two, is revisions to the zoning ordinance sections are identified that in 2015, we're going to have a new housing element. We're required by January 31st of next year to update our housing element. We're going to start that process with the general plan, the general plan update has already begun. And we recognize that the existing ordinance recognizes some of the targets that were embedded in our previous housing element. So we need to make changes to that. Most critically, the number of housing units we are required to provide by ABAG, that is changing, and that needs to be recognized in the ordinance. Also, we've recognized that we currently don't, or we currently recognize that a best practice would be to include the payment in lieu of constructing for-sale housing as an option, so that developers, instead of building, they can provide money to the city in lieu of that construction. And then, another issue which is identified is that that should also be a provision for rental housing, not only for for-sale housing. And then, we also have recognized that sometimes a developer might wish to construct housing. Another developer might wish to pay. So there is a best practice of allowing there to be a series of options that are available depending upon what the developer would like to do. And then, we have fairly significant infrastructure costs. Coming forward at a later date will be an analysis of what those other infrastructure costs are. Many of you are aware of probably the most significant one of concern being the levees. That's an infrastructure issue. But there are fairly significant other ones, roads, storm drains. And if in fact, the combined fee is too high, it would inhibit development, inhibit developers from carrying forward projects. So we want to be, look at it comprehensively, and this is what issue six is getting to. And then, issue number seven, is that we have recognized that the housing in the city of East Palo Alto is older than the housing in the county, which necessarily means that there would be likely a greater need to not only rehabilitate, but sometimes they will be demolished. Currently, the ordinance does not, did not foresee that possibility. So we have, we are recommending that the new ordinance acknowledge that reality and prepare for it, so that if a property developer decides to demolish units, there is an inclusionary housing requirement that will apply.
So let me try to draw some, some conclusion. In essence, the courts in Palmer case in 2008 basically said that we cannot require units to be provided as part of a rental housing project. And the only way that you can require that those developers of rental housing participate in helping those of more need is to go through a NEXUS study, go through the impact fee analysis, and determine what that fee would be. We have done that, and that was the primary emphasis for moving forward with the NEXUS study. And the consultant came in November again and talked about that. And we can, as we come back with the ordinance, if you direct us to do so, we can come back and talk a little more about that, because we'll have to be looking at that in the context of the fees themselves. The second part of that was that we anticipated that the courts would likely be heading down the track of also requiring this impact fee analysis for for-sale type product as well. And that was fortuitous that we chose to do that because we had the court case, the Sterling case versus Palo Alto, that for the first time said, yes, we think that this is also something that needs to be done as part of an impact fee analysis. So we're ahead of the curve a little bit on that. I think we're the first ones probably out of the gate to actually have that NEXUS analysis done for for-sale housing as well. The main policy issue that we're really talking about tonight, and asking for your direction on, is the issue of putting forth the in-lu fee, or the impact fee, or development fee, or whatever you wish to call it, there are many, many names for it, but in essence, a fee instead of the actual development of units. As it's stood for the last decade-plus of the ordinance, our ordinance was designed around requiring units to be provided as part of a project, inclusion, included units. And this is a shift. But this shift is one that recognizes staffing challenges with the loss of redevelopment. It also recognizes that redevelopment funding is lost. You had to note that $1 billion across the state were lost. We lost about $4 million in the mix with the redevelopment. Plus, that was just what was lost in the fund. We lost the ability to generate 20% of tax revenue for future housing projects. So we lost a huge opportunity. And that really has changed where we are and what our needs are moving forward, at least in our estimation, and that's why we're here tonight. What this is suggested is that ordinance come back, we will discuss the issue with you coming back with what that fee should be set for any fee that would be established, that would be by resolution and a separate action. And then we would come back with an ordinance that would reflect these revisions and policy actions. Again, this is a, this is a fairly significant policy transition, although I will say the last amendment that was done in modification to the ordinance two years ago reflected this transition because it included the opportunity to pay in-lu fees for for-sale housing projects. And in two circumstances, to date, we have done so, and the council's approved those agreements, one with DKB Housing and the other with Cummings Properties there at the 101 Ravenswood. So we've already started down that path, but this would sort of complete the circle in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have questions for staff on this item?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I know you're going to come back, but one of my questions was, how would the fees compare to the actual sale of property? And that's something that you're going to come back with. I had a question on how this affects affordable housing units, and it looks like we were getting some units from the BMR, from this program, but with it going away, it does affect some of the affordable housing in the city as well, is that correct?
Right. Well, one of the benefits is that, for example, if the fee were just roughly $20 per square foot, if you have 10,000-square-foot development, you're going to obtain 200, actually $2 million in fees for the city of East Palo Alto, which can actually be used to create affordable housing based upon the needs of, the income needs of the city. So for example, if we determine that we want to provide housing for 30% or less of the area's median income, which is very low, you'll have that flexibility as counsel to make that decision.
Did you have any more questions?
Back to the mayor. Thanks for your presentation. I'm actually in favor of the motion, but I do have some, I think it's more from the standpoint of, I want to see what you're going to bring forward. So, as someone who certainly has benefited from the BMR program, I'm really, I have a bunch of questions. Let me begin with, what do you anticipate using the in-lu fees for as it relates, you know, if that's going to be one of your desired outcomes, what are those funds going to be targeted for?
Well, that is, that ultimately is going to be the council's decision to make on that. Those fees will go into a restricted, any fees that will be paid will go into a restricted fund that would only be available for activities that are specifically related to affordable housing. One of the issues that we're looking at and has come out of the EPA Can Do Project, for example, is looking to come back in February with a more strategic evaluation of the limited funds that we have available, looking at what prospectively we will generate likely out of future TOT dollars coming in from, from the measure, measure C, no, measure J. And then, I should know, not measure C. And then ultimately, what we could look at in terms of potential generation of dollars coming out of the in-lu fee pool as well. And at that point, then, you as the council can choose how you wish to utilize those within the framework and parameters of that restricted fund.
Okay. So 10 years ago, 12 years ago, when the BMR ordinance was put into place, the thinking at that time was to assure that with the increase in development in this region, that East Palo Alto residents had an opportunity to continue to be in this region. What would you say to that with this new objective? I mean, how will we assure that that will continue? Or at least that the city will have some level of investment, making sure that that's a desired outcome?
I think from staff's perspective, we believe that, that the change in policy will actually lead to greater opportunity for affordable housing for residents of East Palo Alto and future residents. As you've seen, again, with the HIP Housing presentation and what we've talked about with the garage conversion, second units issue, the housing costs are increasing, and it is an increasingly challenging situation. And the rent stabilization itself keeps the units at a stabilized rent point, but it does not address the issue of the income levels of the individuals renting those. In this regard, with the use of these funds, as well as your TOT funds, and potentially other funds that may become available or may be opened up through a trust fund that the state develops and whatever, you know, we could look at developing affordable housing that really meets the affordability level for residents of East Palo Alto.
Do you anticipate that these in-lu funds could equal that of measure C funds?
Of the measure, measure J? Oh, you know, the challenge with, the challenge with these funds is that, is that they could generate far in excess of the, of the TOT funds with that, but that is dependent upon development activity occurring, which we don't control. And so that is, that is the balancing point. The fees come in when new development comes in, and so we don't control that entirely. So it's, unlike the TOT, which is an annual allocation, and it's a pretty predictable year in and year out, it, that's a bit of an unknown, so it makes it a little more difficult to program that.
Okay. So you mentioned also this pay-as-you-protest method of engagement with developers in the city. Do you anticipate, I mean, if we go, if we go down that road, that it would enhance our opportunities with developers?
Oh, we believe that, we, you know, we believe yes, that the inclusionary units themselves requirement is a deterrent to some, to some, some parties. That doesn't mean it's the wrong thing, and it was the wrong thing, but right now, the way the courts are taking this, it's making it increasingly difficult to actually even go that path anyway. But clearly, when you talk to development, developer interest, they would much prefer to pay a known fee over having to provide the units and have to market those, sell those, rent those.
So it removes a barrier for us, okay.
Yes.
So last question on the water piece. I mean, obviously, we've got some challenges on the water end. The NEXUS study is recommending that homeowners or developers have the ability to tear down units, to potentially build new units. What impact would that have on our water allocations or desire, would we have to provide additional water for them or wells, or if they were to go down that road, or?
Well, each existing unit, in essence, would have a credit for the fixture count that they had and the water usage they were, they were dealing with. And right now, one of the EPA Can Do Mid Peninsula Project, they, they recently, Mid Peninsula recently did a major remodel of units in the Woodlands area. They are doing a water audit over the next six to eight to 12-month period. And part of that revision that they did was to do significant water efficiency. One of the issues and one of the things that we're working on is the idea of being able to transfer those water credits from the conservation on that project potentially over to the University Avenue project. Now, that's something we still have to work through, but that's a concept that is being put out there. So much like that, if somebody came in and said, we want to build five units instead of the one, there would be a credit. But the issue of water is one of challenge and will have to be addressed, because each unit is required to have a will serve and water availability commitment.
John, if we go down this road, do you anticipate that our housing inventory will increase as a result of this?
I think, one, I think it's impossible to know what, what this will do. We, what we believe is that this will provide greater flexibility to the council and the community in terms of the types of housing projects they wish to fund. It'll be more of your choice rather than the developer's choice as to whether they come in with a single-family detached project that you really can't say no to. come in with a single family detached project that you really can't say no to, and then you get an attached unit, or whether you say, look, we want the, we want these fees because we think that we need to look at a focus project of a rental project that, that's available for 50% of, of median income for the county, or 20% or whatever that may be. And that, and we have a partner. We, you know, we, we clearly, you know, have no idea exactly what is going to happen out of this.
Was this vetted through the planning commission?
Yes.
The last one.
And.
And their recommendation was?
Their recommendation was, there was concern about the income of East Palo Alto residents and that they were concerned that it targets specifically those that live here. And we addressed that by indicating that you as a council would have the, the right to use those funds to target which income group you felt most needed it. And because this falls in the zoning code, it would go back to the planning commission for deliberation and massaging, so to speak, and then come back to this body.
And the amendments are posted?
That's correct.
Of that conversation? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, we have four speakers. First, we have Daniel Saver. Please come up.
Madam Mayor and other members of the council, my name is Daniel Saver and I'm an attorney at Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. And as you heard from the presentation from the HIP Housing Administrator and then also from staff, I just don't need to repeat and rehash what I think you've heard from them, but just to provide my perspective as a housing attorney who's working with tenants, many of whom are facing eviction, many of whom can't afford the places that they live in now, I would just like to sort of emphasize the fact that it's no secret that there's a pretty serious housing crunch here in East Palo Alto, in addition to generally this entire region. And I'd like to commend the city and its staff for taking up this opportunity to implement a new inclusionary zoning ordinance. As you've heard, some of the legal landscape has shifted recently that has made it more challenging for cities to promote affordable housing. And inclusionary zoning is, is, has suffered some drawbacks, but this direction that staff is attempting to move in to re-implement this ordinance and to update it and to make sure that it's in compliance with state law, I think is a fantastic opportunity for the city to try and bring in new money that it could then use to build additional affordable housing. And so I think that it's, it's important for the council to recognize that this is a way in which you can actually get additional funds, which is so very important in this time after having lost so many sources of funding, such as the redevelopment agencies and whatnot. So I just want to, again, express my support for the revision, and I look forward to following the process as staff moves forward with its recommendations.
Thank you.
Next, we have Annie Loyah.
Sorry, Daniel spilled water back there, and I'm on heels, I have to be very careful coming out. My name is Annie Loyah. I reside at 1973 Tate Street here in East Palo Alto. I've come before this council numerous times. Welcome back. Ms. Rutherford is glad, glad to you again. So I, I'm here to speak on the inclusionary zoning, and I agree with most of the points that Daniel has previously made and that the staff has made, that we, we are truly happy and satisfied that the, that the city staff is moving forward with, with thinking about this revision to inclusionary zoning. And really, now giving the city the opportunity to think about some strategies that we can now control about how do we think about and address affordable housing and the lack thereof in East Palo Alto, and to which income brackets that we really want to be able to target. I look forward to also following the process. Will be very involved, even looking forward to speaking to any council members in detail if, if you guys would like more information as we are following that issue as well. And I would look forward to the, the second round of conversations as we get into the details about allocation of these funds and making sure that we are directing it and moving with the intent of providing affordable housing and thinking about affordable housing in the city of East Palo Alto. As you know, our stock is greatly threatened currently in the city. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is William Webster.
Mayor Martinez, members of the city council, my name is William Webster. I reside at 480 East O'Keefe. I'm the senior member of the Rent Stabilization Board. I'm, I guess I'm now in my 22nd year of service to the community in that capacity. Something that I have brought up repeatedly over the years that needs to be emphasized is there was mention of a tear down of older housing stock, much of which, if it's multifamily housing, would be in all likelihood under the Rent Stabilization Program. Back in the 1990s, there was a lawsuit by a local landlord involving Mr. Wilbur Jackson, who has been the past president of the Ravenswood Little League, where the landlord was claiming he was exempt from rent stabilization, but because he had done a massive remodeling of his existing property. However, he left a portion of the structure in place. And so the Rent Stabilization Board at that time took the position that even though there's massive reconstruction, this is a remodeling job. And so on that basis, we could keep the property within the Rent Stabilization Program. That issue was challenged before the Superior Court. Superior Court upheld the position of the Rent Stabilization Board, that that was a remodeling, and even though 99% of the structure had been replaced, it was still a remodeling and the property remained in the Rent Stabilization Program. I brought this issue repeatedly over the years, and this is something that needs to be factored into the inclusionary housing as it pertains to the possibility of demolishing existing housing that is in the Rent Stabilization Program. The legal precedent is there, it has never been challenged, and it's something that needs to be considered if we're going to, to preserve any significant amount of so-called affordable housing in East Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Robert Jones.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and interested council members. This issue here is something that I remember going back when the city first started off with the inclusionary zoning. There were some things, and I'm going to try to make this brief, but, because this is about a two-hour conversation for myself. When the, the inclusionary zoning first started, we started over on the Peninsula Park, was the first major push to try to develop inclusionary zoning and get housing, affordable housing here in the community. And it was, it was a choice, we had same conversation, the same concerns of whether the developers would actually do the right thing. And, and we found out that when given a choice between paying a fee and building affordable housing, they would build affordable housing. I mean, they would build a housing, market rate housing, and affordable housing fees would get omitted. So having the choice between money and building housing, it's a hard choice for, it's not a hard choice for a developer. They're going to choose to build market rate housing and forget the affordable housing. I think it's really up to the city, I think it's up to the council, to keep that before this body. If you go with the new direction of the in lieu fee, I, I think in the long run, you're going, affordable housing is going to suffer here in the community. Right now, it's hard to find money to build through affordable housing, and it's going to be even harder in the years to come, unless there is a new stream. And this should be a new stream, but I'm not sure really how much money is going to be generated from the stock, from the overall housing that needs to be built here in the community, that's going to generate enough money to build out what we need for affordable housing. So until that question is really answered in terms of the dollar amount that's going to equate to the number of units that we need here in this community, that's going, the city can throw in, until we can answer that question, it's going to be hard, well, you've got to make the decision, not me, of, of whether to go down this road and not, not requiring that the developers put in the, a requirement for inclusionary zoning.
Thank you.
Number of speakers?
Okay. Any other comments from council on this item?
Mayor Mary, say one thing?
Yes, please.
I think we can, without a doubt, say that there will never be enough money to address the housing needs in this state, let alone this region or this city. So that, that's a reality. So I, I think we can agree on that. The issue really is, is, is a pathway to provide some of that money. And, and we, we look forward to engagement with the community. I think there, there, there is a process that we need to talk about and a lot of issues that the planning commission will do that work and deal with it. But there clearly is not going to be enough money, and there hasn't been, and there is not likely to be enough money to really deal with the affordable housing needs wherever you are in the state. It's a huge challenge.
Just a quick question in regards to other cities nearby. What are they doing as far as legally addressing their inclusionary, below market housing, you know?
And I would say, city, council member Rutherford, that it varies. The city of Palo Alto, as we indicated, does have an inclusionary, or did have an inclusionary housing ordinance that the court found violated the Mitigation Fee Act. The city, Redwood City, does not have any inclusionary housing program, and they're going through a building boom right now. So there's a significant loss or vacuum in that, in that example. As you probably are aware, the city of Menlo Park had not updated its housing element since 1992. It had the second oldest housing element in the state. Those are outliers, but we do have, from what I understand, quite a few of the, there are 21 municipalities in the county, including the county being one of them, and the majority of them have some form of an inclusionary housing program. And so I've just identified some of the outliers that don't, but the vast majority do have some form of a program.
And given the landscape that we now have with the courts, it is foreseeable that they will also be making adjustments and going through this process. I can say that Mountain View also went through this, and they went through an extensive time and process to deal with the in lieu fees that they were establishing. The reason I know that is because the same consultant did, did much of the work there. So I, I do know that they were dealing with that, and they just did adopt in the last six months, I think, the new fees that were, that were again tied to inclusionary per square foot fees, much like what was proposed here, but as, just as another county, another city in another county locally.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, one more question. Can you just give an update or a description of the in lieu fee versus the impact fee? Like, we've had an opportunity to sit down and you've explained this to me, but for those that don't really understand, can you give a description of that?
Yes. So the in lieu fee is, when I'm referring to housing in lieu fee, it's a fee that is roughly proportional to the increased demand for housing by low-income populations. The development impact fee is a fee that is related to the increased costs to service that property through roads or the increased need for open space by new residents of the city that would result from that project. So one of them, the development impact fee, is addressing the, the infrastructure needs of, of city residents as a result of that project, whereas the housing impact fee is looking at the disposable income that those new households have and the impact that has on new jobs created in the community.
So I'm going to, Mr. Nagel, did you want to add anything to that? I saw you moving.
Is it on? Yeah. I believe with the changes in the case law, the distinguishing between an in lieu fee and an impact fee are basically going to evaporate because the process that the court in the Palo Alto case, the Sterling case, said is that the fee that was being imposed had to comply with the Mitigation Impact Fee Act. So it's tomato, tomato. The bottom line is that there has to be a Nexus Study that establishes a rational, reasonable relationship between the fee and the impact, the need for affordable housing. And, and that's the path that we need to go down to, to comply with the ordinance. Allowing the opportunity for the developer to build just gives more options, and the trade-off is the fact that if they build it, they're building it as part of their development on site. If there's a fee and the city is collecting it, then the city, through the council, will have to determine a location, make sure that there's sufficient funding, or go out to get loans and build the, the new project at another location with the fees that it's been collecting. So there are, there are different challenges, but unfortunately, I don't think that we have much option. There was the comment in the staff report about the governor who was considering, I've forgotten, the Assembly Bill 1229, which would allow government to impose inclusionary housing requirements. And he, when he vetoed it, he wanted to see what the Supreme Court was going to do in the Sterling Park case. It'll, I, I don't have a take on what may happen and how the state may revisit that, but of course, that we will see as time folds. But I, I do think this is a prudent course until something happens on the state level. And of course, once this, if the state does change, then we would come back to the council to make sure that we're in compliance with whatever new law has been adopted.
Good. Thank you.
Senator Mayor, I have a question. So, John, getting back to the, the demolition piece, right? So the developer has 30 units of housing or landlord, and they want to demolish it, and those units are under rent stabilization. Are those units replaced back into that inventory, or are they lost to that grouping?
We're, and, and I could say, I thought you meant John Nagels to answer that one, but.
John and John, well, both of you guys kind of dropped your head down a little bit.
I, I will say this, I think we're getting into the weeds a bit on it, and the issue is that the Rent Stabilization Ordinance itself has a number of provisions for, for tenant protection and issues there, which is completely distinct from this issue. What we were suggesting and moving forward with is the idea that this ordinance would not allow someone just to demolish and then say, well, I had a unit here, so I'm not subject to the fee. But the whole rent stabilization issue is a, is a, is a completely separate compartment, compartmentalized issue with that, which will come up, I'm sure, in the context of conversation.
All right. Well, it was already raised by one of our community residents.
And, and just to piggyback on that, council member, I made a notation in my notes so that as we go forward with the ordinance, to make sure that we examine the issue that Mr. Webster brought up and, and bring it forth to the council with an explanation of whether we can make changes that would, to maximize the protection. And I, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I will assure you that we will incorporate that into whatever ordinance we bring forward or a recommendation that we need to adopt another ordinance. And you may recall that we have a tenant protection ordinance that was, is being drafted. I don't think it can be rolled into that necessarily, but we'll, we will consider all of these and, and try and find the most appropriate vehicle to bring it back to the council.
If I might just want to add one component, and that had to do with sort of the difference between the Rent Stabilization Program protections versus what would be generated by an inclusionary or housing under the Mitigation Fee Act. The, the rent stabilization does allow certain increases that are affixed to the Consumer Price Index. Once a tenant moves out, the unit's decontrolled, which means it floats back to the market rate. With the. With the type of housing envisioned by the Mitigation Fee Act under this program, you would have what we consider to be permanent affordability. Well, we say 59 years, so I wanted to qualify that. But permanent affordability typically means that there is a long-term commitment to providing housing for populations of need versus a an apartment rent that will upon the vacancy will automatically float back to the market rate.
So can we make a motion? Sure. I make a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance revising Chapter 8.5, below-market rate housing requirement of the city zoning ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion by our president's mayor, a second by Councilwoman Moody. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes with four votes. That is the last item on our regular city council meeting agenda. And we're gonna close this meeting and open our joint special successor agency meeting with one item.
If I may, this is we corrected the agenda, it won't be a joint meeting, it's just simply a meeting of the successor agency.
Oh, okay. Okay. So this meeting, our regular city council meeting is now over at 9:18 PM.
Okay, let's call a roll.
You can go ahead and start our next meeting. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board Member Abrika is absent. Board Member Rutherford?
Here.
Here. Board Member Moody is here. Board Member Gochier?
Here.
Chair Martinez?
Here.
Okay. So we have the long-range property management plan amendment item on our agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is a, I mean, sorry, successor agency board members.
Where's my name?
Chair and successor agency board members. Thank you. John Dowdy, Community Development Director. This is really just a simple cleanup issue. As you recall, in December, we brought forward the Long Range Property Management Plan to the council, actually, it was in November. The item was presented to the Oversight Board, who is responsible for reviewing and approving that before it is sent on to the State Department of Finance. This is one of those reel-down, wind-down of redevelopment. Basically, what this does is simply make a provision that there will be recorded deed restriction on the parcels, particularly the pad D, which is the parcel that we're looking at potentially, the well site and the landing of the pedestrian overcrossing, and the tank ledge site that would limit the uses on those properties, which are currently would allow uses beyond the public realm to be limited to public uses. And that should, in in such time down in the, you know, that we would look at selling that, that those for other purposes, that those would then revert back to a taxable sale and be in the in the property tax, it would be returned back to all the taxing agencies and entities, including the city as well as the other folks. So this was just a cleanup issue to bring back that recommendation from the Oversight Board. That was their approval and recommendation, but they requested that the successor agency affirm that recommendation as part of this action. This is required to be sent to the Department of Finance by January 16th, so time is of the essence at this point with regard to the issue. Thank you.
All right. And council members, and board members, questions for John? Do we have any speakers on this item? None? Okay.
I make a motion, can I make a motion now? I make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the Long Range Property Management Plan as amended by the Oversight Board, finding that approval of Long Range Property Management Plan is not a project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, and directing staff to submit the Long Range Property Management Plan to the Department of Finance for approval pursuant to Health and Safety Code, Section 3419 dot 5.
Second at five.
Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Gochier, a second by Board Member Rutherford. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's four yes votes. Motion passes. Thank you. And that concludes our meeting. It is now 9:21 PM.
Hey, John, so what are the quotes in the books on this? What are the quotes in the...